All right, so that takes us through staff and appointee reports for the agenda planner for the next, you know, four meetings that we've got. And it takes us to item seven, presentations for general information. And we are fortunate to have the 2020 annual coroner's report. And Leon, I got this as quick as we can so we can take value of your time. So we're lucky to have Dr. Leon Young, or Dr. Leon Kelly here, the El Paso County coroner. And he is accompanied by Dr. Robin Johnson. So Robin, you might want to come up now at this time, too. And again, Leon, I want to thank you for your patience and flexibility as we change the date of this. But now we even get more current information and I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks for allowing us to be here today. So I am the El Paso County coroner and chief medical examiner. And I'm here today to present my annual report, which is something that I put out every single year. In the last essentially 100 years, public health has, across not only here but across the world, has doubled human life expectancy. And the way that we've done that, certainly not me, generations before us, is better access to cleaner water and better food, vaccinations, and the dawn of modern medicine, which includes antibiotics and better obstetrics and all the kind of scientific pharmacologic advances that we've made. And just as important as those scientific discoveries is the policymakers that have been able to deliver on those scientific advances, which is what puts me here today. Our job, my job, as the coroner, is to essentially figure out where we've come up short, right? Where the worst-case scenarios have happened, where we have failed, what we need to do better. And then I come in and I present that to great folks like you and to my colleagues behind me at Public Health. And we get to the work of fixing it. And we are the beneficiaries of generations of collaboration, innovation, and hard work. And so times like this is now our responsibility to do those same things for future generations. And so my report is where that conversation begins. And so we will start with that. Can I drive here or somebody else? There we go. Okay, so.
Are you going to do it now?
Sounds good. That's fine. Okay. So first, the office of the coroner, what does the coroner do? The coroner by state statute is responsible for investigating all deaths that are sudden, unexpected, or non-natural. And that's spelled out specifically in our constitution. In addition to figuring out why, how, and why people die, my job is to pronounce death, determine cause and manner, which is really the big thing. And then identify human arraigns, notify next of kin, which you can imagine is one of the more difficult things that we do. Investigate any deaths that occur in the presence of law enforcement or any state or municipal facility. And then really anything that constitutes a public health risk. The drafters of our constitution were very smart and they said, hey, we need somebody whose job it is to figure out what went wrong so we can do better. And that's my responsibility. I also spend a lot of time in court testifying as an expert witness, as well as my colleagues. So when we had to adjust last time, timing, that's pretty much every day of my life. If you've ever sat in front of a courtroom waiting to testify, I will have wasted probably thousands of hours of my life staring at walls, waiting for prosecutors. You know, that's right. So, and then one of a few things, there are a lot of really good things I get to do, but one of the good things I do get to do is grant tissue and organs for harvest in cases where we can use something very, very tragic and make something really, really great out of it and save people's lives. So, next slide. So my office investigated just over 6,000 deaths last year. And this is everything from, you know, we found, I was on a hike and I found a bone that ends up belonging to a deer, but we still have to go out and deal with it, all the way up to, you know, mass shootings and national media gaining events. Of those, a little over 6,000 cases, about 1,300 of those required an autopsy or some sort of examination in our office. And we had a huge jump in 2020 over 2019, a 25% increase in total number of cases investigated. Some of that's going to be due to COVID, but not all of it. And then we had almost a 10% increase in the number of autopsies. You expect as your population grows that your case numbers are going to go up, but they should go up at a very relatively predictable rate. And last year was a fairly dramatic increase. And here is the state of Colorado. And our office is the largest coroner medical examiner's office in the state of Colorado. One of those reasons because El Paso County is usually tied or very close to population with Denver County. But more importantly, our office acts as a regional medical examiner for much of southern and eastern Colorado. So all the counties that you see highlighted there are counties that we perform the autopsies for. And in Colorado, other than Denver, really, the coroner is still in an elected position. About half the country has moved on and involved to what we call the medical examiner system, where my job, the chief medical examiner, is an appointed position. About half the rest of the country, it's still an elected position, which is fine. You know, it's always good when you get to pick your leaders and people who represent your government. The challenge that we have here in Colorado, however, is that the requirements to run for coroner have not advanced since 1876. So to be coroner in El Paso County currently need to be 18 registered voter and a non-felon, despite the fact that in the last 100-plus years, close to now 150 years-ish, the job requires much higher qualifications than that. So most of these counties have what we call late coroners, which are non-physician, non-forensic pathologist coroners. Many of them own funeral homes and things like that. And so they can't do autopsies, they're not doctors. And so they bring those cases to my office and me and my colleagues, my staff, perform those autopsies and then directly tell them, here's what you're going to put on the death certificate. So there is, it's kind of evolved naturally over time to be a regional medical examiner despite no laws or statutes in place that would necessitate it. Our biggest contributors are, you know, Teller County, which is good because we share a judicial district, and then Fremont County, you know, makes sense, most populous counties that surround us. Next slide. And this is where the core exists, why I'm here. This is what I spent, you know, 13 years after high school to become a forensic pathologist so I could fill out this piece of paper. And this is a death certificate. And a death certificate is a legal document. Everybody who's born gets a birth certificate, everybody who dies gets a death certificate. And it's important. It's the foundational piece of data that we use at Public Health and others to drive advances, right? And we have to start by knowing what's wrong before we can get to fixing the problem. And under the death certificate are three things, three key things that I deal with. The cause of death, why has the person died? They were alive, now they're dead, what happened, right? We're going to talk about a lot of those today. Gunshot wounds, we're going to talk about stab wounds, multiple blunt force injuries, heart attacks, things like that. What's the issue? What's the event that occurred that derailed their life and resulted in death? Mera death is the category in which that death falls. And there are five of them. It's five little checkboxes. And every death that's ever happened in the history of the world has to fall into one of those five categories. And we'll get to those in a little bit. And then what we call part two, which is the contributors. So not the things that directly killed you, but the things that certainly didn't help. Let's say you had a heart attack, you'd say what we call atherosclerotic cardiovascular disease, fancy way to say the person had a heart attack. And then in part two, you'd put things like diabetes, or smoking, or some of these other things that can contribute to the person either getting that disease that killed them, or we know that if you have some of these coexisting diseases, much like we saw with COVID, when you have some of these other things, COPD, you've got obesity, you've got diabetes, we know that for all injuries and all diseases, people who have some of these other difficult disease states do more poorly. And so it's important to keep track of those as well. And here's the breakdown of those manners. And like I said, there's five, unfortunately on this slide, there are six. And I'll explain that in a second, but there are natural, accident, suicide, homicide, and undetermined. There's a few unclassified, and unclassified are deaths that are in utero. And so if the child is stillborn, they don't get a birth certificate because they were never alive outside of the womb. So they get a death certificate, because you can't die if you've never technically, legally been alive. And so they go into that other category. And here's the breakdown in our office, accidents usually top out, and we'll talk about why in a second. Naturals are always up there, too. You don't see that on the news, you know, six people died by heart attacks last night. But that's ultimately the goal of life, right? To live a long, healthy, prosperous life, get to an advanced age, and then die of natural diseases. I don't see a lot of those people in my work. And suicides, which we'll talk quite a bit about today, and then homicides, which garners the vast majority of the attention of the local media, you know, for obvious reasons. Next slide. And here's our accidents. Our two big ones are always going to be drugs, number one, and then motor vehicle crashes are going to be number two. And the story really of 2020, after you get past the gorilla in the room of COVID, is really going to be drugs. And we'll spend quite a bit of time talking about it. Motor vehicle accidents kind of comes up there, number two, and then everything else falls to a distant third and beyond. Next slide. It wasn't tough to see, but our drug deaths jumped from 130 deaths in El Paso County to 186 total in, from 2019 to 2020. So a massive increase in our drug-related deaths. And these are all accidental, these are not suicidal drug overdoses. And we're really up across the board. Fentanyl is what's garnered the most attention locally and nationally. It's a powerful opioid medication, and we've been expecting it to move this direction for a very long time, and certainly it's here. But that's not the only thing. We saw increases in methamphetamine and heroin and our cocaine. The areas where we are succeeding is, and what we saw, you know, five, six years ago, which were predominantly prescription drug overdoses, we've done an incredible job in many, at the benefit of the person to my right here and her efforts of bringing those down. But unfortunately, as it has since the creation of drugs, it evolves. Where you put pressure, you decrease, and unfortunately, it's like a game of whack-a-mole and it pops up someplace else. It's an arms race in the better that we get at getting those drugs off the street or educating folks to not use them and getting people clean, then another drug comes and gets imported and we start all over again.
Dr. Kelly, do you mind taking any questions during your presentation?
Absolutely, anytime.
Okay, thanks. Some of the people watching may wonder, and I have, you know, I think I know what methamphetamine and cocaine and heroin, can you talk a little bit about what fentanyl is and about that substance and why it seems to have gone to the head of the class here?
Absolutely, and that's actually the topic of the next slide. So we'll get to that in a second. Great question. I think what's, well, before we move on to the next one, though, I think what's important is this is a very busy slide. And the reason it's busy is because this is every death, the drugs also listed in combination. And so you can see, and it's not just you just use heroin, you just use fentanyl. You often use heroin, fentanyl, and methamphetamine altogether. And so a large portion of our drugs, 40% of those are because it's a combination of drugs. Either they're using two drugs at the same time, or your drug supply has been contaminated either intentionally or unintentionally with multiple compounds. And you can imagine why every one of these drugs is dangerous, but in combination, the likelihood of negative outcomes, including death, increases dramatically. And that's the problem that we've seen increasing over the last several years, is the use of these drugs in combination. So the next slide, I believe, yes, deals specifically with fentanyl. And here's the US, and everything in blue, which is the entire eastern half of the country, it has, is the number one drug, this is from 2017, but it's true year after year, the number one drug present on a death certificate. Now, there might be other drugs, too, but the number one drug present in every one of those blue states is fentanyl. The number one drug present on a death certificate in every one of those reddish-pink states is methamphetamine. And that's still true this year. Methamphetamine is still the highest drug that we see on those. But about four or five years ago, we began to be warned by the CDC and the Drug Enforcement Agency that fentanyl, which is under the umbrella of opioids, which is our painkillers, similar to heroin, oxycontin, morphine, and all of those, it's semi-synthetically derived or synthetically derived and has a much higher potency. So we typically use morphine as kind of the standard, and fentanyl is about 100 times more powerful than morphine, and it's about 80 times, 50 to 80 times more powerful than heroin. And when I say powerful, that means more toxic, more likely to kill you. And then you can see kind of the relative lethal doses there in those two little files. But we were warned several years ago that fentanyl was making its way westward, and we've seen on the East Coast, kind of the Rust Belt areas, that when fentanyl, the amount of fentanyl increases in your community, your deaths are going to skyrocket because the very dangerous nature of the drug itself. And so we've seen it. I think four years ago, four, five years ago, we were at four fentanyl deaths. And then we jumped up, I think, to nine, and then we jumped up to 21. And now this year, I think we're up to 47, I think, in 2020. And so that exponentially increasing fentanyl presence in our community is what's going to drive, moving forward, many of those deaths, not just fentanyl alone, but oftentimes fentanyl in combination with other drugs. So next slide. Here's just a little bit of data. So 8% of the prescription, 8% of our drug deaths, the medication that was used was prescribed by the physician. This was a much, much higher percentage five or six years ago, when the big problem after methamphetamine, when we talk about our opioids class, was prescribed opioids. We've done a great job of getting that number down. 67% of our accidental drug deaths were male, and you'll see that's a common thread throughout many of our challenges, particularly in the behavioral health arena, is that males dominate most of these categories. The average age of death is 41. We've seen, you know, there's maybe a month ago, it came out, the second half of 2020, and Americans' life expectancy dramatically fell for the first time since World War II over a percentage point across the board. Some racial and ethnic groups were closer to 3% decrease, a three-year decrease in life expectancy. A lot of that's going to be COVID, not all of it's going to be COVID, because we've seen skyrocketing drug rates, drug death rates across the country. And the average age is a young person, right? The younger you die, the more impact you have on that life expectancy average. About two-thirds are going to have a history of prior substance abuse or addiction. So these are people who have been treated, they've been in programs, they're known to have these struggles. That shouldn't be super surprising. Substance abuse and addiction is a very, very difficult disease to manage, but it does tell you that about a third of the time, these are people that are relatively new to their substance abuse, right? But when you have things like fentanyl in your drug supply, all it takes is once. So we have a couple different groups that we have to, we have to figure out how to impact. About 20%, one in five have a history of known mental illness. This is undoubtedly a gross undercount, because we know how many people have untreated, undiagnosed, mental health issues. And then in the majority, almost two-thirds, we have obvious drug paraphernalia, pipes, needles, drugs at the scene. This is usually not a big surprise when we get those tox results back. Next slide. Lots of questions about marijuana I get every year. 24% of all of the cases that come into the coroner's office test positive for marijuana. Now, you have to remember, that's not the general population. The people that end up in the coroner's office are not a randomly selected sample of our citizens. And so that number is going to be much higher than what the general use is. And we followed that number over time after legalization. It increased every year, maybe 0.5, maybe 1%, not dramatically. And then it kind of leveled out the last couple of years. However, this year represented a 3% increase. So it was a little bit of a jump, kind of similar to what we saw with all the drugs across the board. So marijuana is no different in that respect. And we talk a lot about opioids, we've got to do something about opioids, and we're right, it's great, we do. And we have been working hard on it for more than a decade. In our latest round of opioid crisis, if we wanted to do that, we've got to look at what opiates are being used. And 86% of our opioid deaths were either heroin or fentanyl. There's not a lot of juice left to squeeze out of the prescription opioid reduction, right? We got it all the way down to single digits, right? That's where we need to focus our energies at this point if we're going to make a difference. And then if you throw the suicides in there, we've got 118 total opioid-related deaths. Next slide. So suicides, lots, I think that was kind of at the forefront of many of our minds during the pandemic. And we all knew the impact it made on our own lives and the lives of the people we cared about and the community. And so, and this community has had its struggles historically with suicide, both in our youth and in our adults. The entire Rocky Mountain region, up and down, struggles with this. And so it's something that we were monitoring kind of in real time at my office. That's a little bit of a good news, bad news. The good news is that we finished at 178, which the year before in 2019, we're at 180. So we did not see an increase in our total numbers of suicides during the pandemic. And that's something to be celebrated in a way, right? Considering what we've all been through. The bad news is that 180 is one of the highest years we've ever had, so we're kind of equal with our worst, which isn't great. But it's something. And then the kind of the other bad news is when we get to kids, that we did have, we did struggle mightily, as we have in the past with our kids this year. And that's a breakdown of lethal means, and we're going to talk quite a bit about that here in a little bit. But that's the breakdown of what folks are using. And so we talk about means restriction and safety, you got to look at what people are using and focus efforts there. Next slide. Here's some stats, 42 is the average age. We've got a range from 11 to 100 years. So this impacts every single demographic nearly that exists, other than our tiniest of citizens. About 20% of the time, notes or social media posts, and that's evolved from, you know, when I started out in my career, it was all handwritten notes. Now, oftentimes, that's the intervention point, social media, they start posting things that seem a little off, that seem a little worrisome, that seem out of character, that seem kind of desperate. And that's the point at which family, friends can intervene and make a difference, save somebody's life. 61% have reported a history of prior suicidal thoughts, so they are known to have these challenges. But that means 40% of the time, it's a relative surprise to their friends and families that they were struggling with these things. Three-quarters of the time, we're going to find drugs or alcohol onboard, and that's historically kind of consistent. And then about 20% have active or prior military duty. And so lots of efforts, there's been a lot of movement here in the last year or two of a little bit more of a collaborative effort and relationship with our military partners. We know what a great role that they play and what an important role they play in this community in particular. And it's critical that we do partner with them to get these folks the help that they need and deserve, honestly, yeah.
Yeah, Dr. Kelly, do you know, do you have the breakdown of police force, our peace officers in suicide?
I don't, that's a great question. We do know nationally that first responders, law enforcement, those folks do have higher rates of suicide than the general population. And so that is an area that, you know, I know our sheriff has focused on, he has a full-time psychologist on his staff. And so that's something that, you know, we need to take care of the people who take care of us. And then one of the things we did follow was COVID-related. And so what we do when we do an investigation, we talk to the family, we go through everything we can get access to about this person, we identified 18 cases where they had specifically voiced that COVID-related stress, whether that was grief over the death of a loved one to COVID, whether that was economic factors, or fear for the future, or any of those things played a role, which obviously is, I think you would agree, is probably an undercount, too. We don't have the opportunity to have a conversation with the person, right? They're deceased, and so we have to kind of piece it together after the fact. This is true year after year after year, but I think, but I keep saying it, because I think it's startling to most that don't know, it's that 79% of our completed suicides were male. And when we look at the age, it's middle-aged, you know, middle-aged to young adult males. And so, once again, we have limited resources. And so where are we going to focus? We're going to focus on the places we have the biggest problem and we can make the biggest impact. That has been incredibly difficult demographic to reach, and that's why they have essentially an 80% account for 80% of them. But the hardest group to get to admit they have a, to acknowledge that there's a challenge, the hardest to get to accept the help that they need and then continue through that. And so much of our efforts at Public Health and some of the other nonprofits around the community, if I had to answer this, I'd have a Nobel Prize. So I don't, but just because we haven't figured it out yet doesn't mean we don't keep trying. And so you'll see many of our efforts to try to find unorthodox, or new, or different, or ways that we can reach that group that haven't been successful in the past. And so we'll continue to do that. Next slide.
Dr. Kelly, you know, my experience dealing with other males is that they frequently don't want to talk about health issues, they keep it to themselves, they, you know, they just, as a group, and maybe I'm generalizing, but from my experience, even males that are, you know, have surgery that's recommended or other medical care, tend to not take that advice. And if they're depressed, they don't use that word. And, you know, the mental health issues seem to be buried. Is your experience similar to that?
That is my experience, and I'm also, this is coming from, I shouldn't admit this on live television, but I don't think I've seen my primary care doctor in probably like three or four years. So I'm just as bad as anybody else. I was like, you know what, you're right, I need to go see, it's been a long time, give that cholesterol check. No, you're exactly right. You're exactly right. And, you know, there's only, that has to be a culture change, right? And we've talked about that a lot, in that, you know, if you've got a sprained ankle, you're tearing ACL, there's, nobody's going to shame you for going to see somebody get that fixed. We need to approach mental health and mental wellness. And that's the other piece, is we've always approached mental health as it's either, you're fine or it's broken, right? You're either, you're good or you're in a crisis. And that's not how anything works. That's not how our heart health works, that's not how our lung health works. It's a spectrum. You have to do the things upfront to make sure you're caring for those organs so that you are healthy and strong. You've got to get the exercise, you've got to eat good, you've got to do all the things. The brain and your emotional well-being is no different. That needs to be as much of your regiment of well-being and fitness as, you know, your biceps, that you love to work in your chest, which you do to do upper body days, right? It all has to be one and the same. And it can't start at 50 or 60 years old, it has to start from the day that they're born. All right, next. Homicides. So when we talk about homicides, generally it's in the, you know, where was the shooting? Who did they arrest? The trial comes and where they found guilty or not. And that's appropriate, that's how our criminal justice system works. But if you're from, on our perspective, you want to prevent them from happening, right? You want to get there before these issues develop. And so when you take a much broader meta look at what's going on, and you look at the circumstances of the homicides, we see that the vast majority aren't kind of what we think in our heads about what homicides are, robberies and gang shootings and all these kinds of things, but that in this community, the vast majority are altercations, meaning two guys get in a fight, they get in an argument for, I'm sure, something, you know, it's never like, how are we going to get peace in the Middle East? It's some idiotic thing that they escalate dramatically, typically to involve a firearm, that then results in people being killed. Or domestic family violence, meaning intimate partners, family members, people who you know and love and have spent much of your time with. And so when you look at both of those categories, what's the underlying issue there? And the underlying issue in the vast majority is usually young men who don't have the emotional tools to handle what the rest of us would perceive as normal stress. We all get in arguments with people, we all disagree with our partners about things. But these folks don't have the capacity for a multitude of reasons to deal with those things in a healthy, positive, productive way. And things spiral out of control quickly. And that's what we see nearly every day, certainly several times a week at the coroner's office. And that's highlighted in that bottom, 53% of the scenes personally near their suspects and their death. So they knew the person, it's their spouse, it's their friend, it's their, you know, somebody they work with or whatever. And we see that play out unfortunately in many And we see that play out unfortunately many, many, many times. Next slide. So, firearms related, you know, I get questions every year from policymakers, lawmakers, folks like you, community partners, and so, this report grows every year because people ask amazing questions, and I think, I haven't really laid it out like that. And so, this is where one of those came from. And so, we look, you know, we see on the news, you know, we talk about mass shootings and all these kinds of things, and we talk about the homicides. But, when we talk about firearms, that's not the vast majority of how situations where people are dying from firearms, it's suicides. It has been for a very, very long time. And so, the question is, how do we, how do we deal with that? And, you know, one of my core values is, it doesn't, it doesn't do me any good to autopsy people if I'm not gonna, if I'm not gonna do anything with that information. The person who's deceased doesn't care, it's irrelevant to them, we don't do it for them, we do it for us. Because from that, drives how we're going to make our lives better and future generations better. And so, we partner with a lot of the community. And we, my job is to deliver this information to people way smarter than me, who can help figure out what to do with it. And so, one of those groups is the Firearms Safety Working Group, which Dr. Wallace from UC Health is here today with us. And from this data, we partnered Dr. Russell, who is my deputy chief, is on the working group, and they do an amazing stuff, and it's a very diverse group, and he's here to answer any questions. But, from this data, they have developed a three-minute video, which I think we're
Dr. Kelly, while we're waiting to look at the video, the 21 numbers, 2021, more optimistic?
Yeah, so, for suicides, we're essentially on pace with last year. You know, one of the things that we were supposed to be doing right before COVID was partnering with Public Health to come up with data dashboards that could kind of give real-time statistics. And then, this whole pandemic thing happened, which really put a cramp on our, what we're working on. So, we're hoping that once things start to settle down in the second half of the year and next year, that I'll have the opportunity to have much more up-to-date statistics with some of these questions. But, thus far, there hasn't been a significant
Change.
Change. No, we're essentially on par with last year across the board.
Okay. Looks like we got the video queued up.
Gun ownership, whether it be for protection, hunting, or sport, is part of our culture here in El Paso County.
We are proud to live and serve in this community, where so many active-duty military, first responders, and veterans protect our American values.
We support and protect your Second Amendment right to own firearms.
While we live in one of the best cities in the country, we are sad to know that too many people in our community are dying by suicide.
In fact, more residents die by suicide involving a firearm than from homicides and motor vehicle accidents combined. In addition, more people die by suicide using firearms than all other suicide methods combined.
Suicide is often a result of a temporary crisis, and once it passes, you or your loved ones' risk of death by suicide drops dramatically. And a firearm is far more deadly than any other method used to attempt suicide.
Many people believe when someone who wants to die because of suicide will do so regardless whether or not they have access to a firearm.
The truth is, 90% of people who survive a suicide attempt do not go on to die by suicide later in life.
In other words, people are much more likely to survive a suicide attempt if they do not have access to a firearm while in crisis.
The good news is that there are ways to protect your family. Suicide is preventable. As a community, we all have a responsibility to care for one another.
Do you know someone who's struggling?
Feeling hopeless, trapped, or in physical or emotional pain?
Are they increasing their alcohol or drug use?
If so, express your concern and ask directly if they're thinking about suicide.
Asking won't put the idea in their head. Listening to them and accepting their feelings without judgment can save their life. That might be all it takes to get them to the next steps of health and support.
Having conversations with their friends and loved ones about suicide includes talking about safe firearm storage.
Gun ownership, whether it be for protection or for sport, is your right as a citizen. With that comes responsibilities. It's our job to protect this community. We need your help.
Help us. Ensure the safety of your loved ones by storing firearms in a gun safe, keeping them locked, or storing them voluntarily and temporarily outside the home.
Remember, there is always hope. It's our duty as a community and citizens to help the people and each other that are struggling to find the light and find the hope. The following suicide prevention resources are available in our community. On behalf of all the first responders, we thank you.
Can we put that on our website as a link?
Can we do that, Emily? Yep, okay.
Awesome.
Good question. Dr. Kelly, back to you.
All right, back to me. I don't know what the next slide is, but I'm sure it's riveting, whatever. Yeah, I can't beat that. All right, so, one of the things we're also obviously responsible for is investigating child deaths. 2014 state law bill passed that mandated local review of all child deaths. It was being done at the state. At the time, I was on the state child fatality review team, and so, I supported this move, which then necessitated me, myself, and public health partners developing a local review team. And that's been going on now for a long time. The good news was that that team came together right, kind of when we needed it most, that was when our teen suicides escalated fairly dramatically. And so, we had the right people in the right place to get moving on that as quickly as possible. That team continues through today. My deputy chief represents our office on that team now, but we have two of the folks who run that team with us today, and they're going to speak in more detail about what efforts have been going on at Public Health to reduce these. And these are obviously, these are emotionally difficult cases, these are our youngest citizens, all of these are preventable deaths. And so, I think all of us would agree that we exhaust all efforts to prevent these horrible things from happening to kids in the future. And so, when we look at what's going on, it was really two big age groups that we see overrepresented, and that's that one month to one year. This is overwhelmingly unsafe sleep deaths, and you can see that there were eight. Four of them were unsafe sleep surface, two of them were bed sharing with adults, and two of them were both unsafe sleep and bed sharing. And this is, this can be solved with essentially good education and good decision-making by parents. And we, for those of us who have our parents and have young people, when you're tired and you haven't slept in days, you make sometimes bad decisions. And so, it's staying on it. For every new generation of parents, education on safe sleep to prevent these deaths. And then, the other one is that 13 to 17, the biggest group of those are going to be our teen suicides. And that's on the next slide, I believe.
Dr. Kelly, before you leave, what exactly are we talking about when we say an unsafe sleep?
Yeah, so, the American Academy of Pediatrics has an outline of all the criteria you need to meet to be a safe sleep environment. And I could spend an entire hour talking about the evolution of SIDS and where we are now, and the public health efforts that have gone into that, and how effective they are, and the dramatic reduction. The bottom line is that what we used to call SIDS was crib death. Babies went to bed, you put them in to sleep, and then they didn't wake up. And we learned, starting in about the early 90s, that when you really looked at those kids, you discovered that almost, not quite, but close to 100% of those kids were put to sleep in environments where there were certain themes that always came out, which is typically a young child, less than a year, sleeping on an adult sleep surface, a bed with other adults. Or, placed in, on a couch, an unsafe sleep surface, where they can roll and then get wedged in the corner. Or, sleeping, you know, on a floor with mattresses, that the baby can kind of roll and fall in between. So, any sleep surface that does not meet those standard criterias, which is essentially hard-approved surface, no bumpers, no pets, no, you know, adult bedding, no other humans sleeping on that same surface, if you do all of those, the likelihood of infant death approaches zero. It's not entirely zero, but it certainly approaches it. And that if you don't, the risk of death, if you do have any of those things, goes up. And so, much of it is what we've been doing for a couple decades, which is back to sleep in a crib by themselves. And invariably, those cases that we see, those that you see there, none of those met the criteria. And you can get those on, you know, American Academy of Pediatrics, talk to your doctor, you can call Public Health, any of those places, resources online of what that safe sleep environment looks like. And then, moving on to our suicides, you see there, very, very strong male distribution last year, ages 11 to 17. The state defines youth suicides as 17, 317 years during 64 days. So, once you're 18, you go into the adult category, which is why we keep the tabulation that way. A couple of things that changed generally, year after year, almost all teen suicides are limited to the school semesters. We very rarely see them in the summertime. But, I think because of the dramatic disruption in all of our lives, and particularly youth's lives, last year, it was almost an even distribution across the year in those deaths. I am happy to report that we have dramatically decreased those as a community this year, and despite having a very difficult year last year, I think within the last couple weeks, we were at two, which is still too many, there's no doubt about it. But, that's an improvement. So, I think a lot of those efforts that we put in place, a lot of those resources, a lot of that community coming together, and with all those youth-facing organizations, hopefully is allowing us to weather the storm and get through it as quickly as possible. Next slide. And then, homeless is another one that's evolved over the years, there's a lot on this slide.
Yeah, Dr. Kelly, Yolanda Abell, I've got a question for you.
Absolutely.
Thanks, President Skarman. Dr. Kelly, on the teen suicide, do you have any stats that go along with the LGBTQ community? I'm saying that one.
Yes, so, we do, that is one of the areas that we investigate. We have a tool that we use that's essentially a survey, that we ask family, friends, and what we know about the child's schools. And that is one of the areas that we track. I do not know off the top of my head what those numbers look like, but I've got two people that are coming up next, who may be able to answer that question.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, this is our homeless deaths. It increased a little bit from the year before. That's probably a reflection of my office doing a better job of identifying those who are homeless. We use a pretty broad net to try to capture, and you can see the definition that we use up there. Because homelessness, as we all know, is often, you know, there are folks who've lived on the streets for years, but the large portion are kind of in and out of homelessness. They may have a hotel for a while, they may be sleeping at friends, they may have an intimate partner that they're living with, and then they transition in and out of that. So, I felt that the best way to really capture what was going on was to have that sort of broadest definition as possible. And that's kind of evolved over the last couple of years. And so, the increase likely reflects that, as opposed to true increases in the total number of homeless people who have died. I'm just getting better at finding them. And then, you can see the breakdowns of the various categories, drug, substance abuse, we know is a big issue of our homeless population. Mental illness with them is a big issue. But, they also suffer from the natural diseases that the rest of us do, they just often don't have access to the same level of care and prevention and all those kinds of things that the rest of us enjoy. So, all of that is going to take a toll on our homeless population. Next slide. And then, I'll finish on this one. Like I said, it's one of the few positive things I get to do. Twenty-nine folks, El Paso County citizens, had organs recovered for transplantation, and 77 of those organs went into people and saved their lives. So, continue, if people are out there and trying to make that decision, that's a wonderful thing, to make something really great out of something really, really horrible. So, it's an area where our citizens routinely step up and do the right thing.
Do you have a question?
I do. Also, I was thinking, do people donate their bodies to science? Does that go through you, or is that like set before?
Yeah, so, if you die and you're under the coroner's jurisdiction, I investigate it, then once we're complete with our exam, we will release the remains to whatever funeral home, or funeral service, or to a research institute at your request. Whoever you decide, and your next of kin decide, we will, we will release them to that person. I can tell you, not a lot of folks do that. Usually, that decision is often driven by lack of funds, maybe, to pay for services and things, because those groups will generally then cover the costs of a cremation, or whatever it is that they're going to do. But, that's not a very common thing. For folks who have unclaimed remains, meaning they've died, they either don't have next of kin or living relatives, or the relatives don't want anything to do with them, which you have to understand that a lot of the folks who end up at the coroner's office, substance abuse, mental illness, they've hurt the people in their lives. And so, it's not uncommon for those family members to be like, look, I'm done, I'm out, I don't want anything to do with this. In that case, what we do is we turn those remains over to the public administrator. We have a contract with a private attorney who manages those estates and works with local funeral homes to liquidate what property they have, to then pay off any debts, and then get those remains out of our office and into usually cremation, and then appropriately and respectfully placed.
Do you happen, yeah, do you happen to know the percentage of people who do donate their organs to?
I don't know, it's a very complicated process. So, you say, yes, I do, but it depends on, there's two things, either organs or tissue. And organs are what we commonly think of, you're in a motorcycle crash, you're brain-dead, you're at the hospital, you're alive. Those are the organs that are going to harvest and then transplant into a living person. But, the majority of people who donate aren't, don't die in a circumstance that makes that appropriate, right? They're dead, they've been dead too long, they're found too late, they have diseases or infectious diseases or other things that don't allow those organs to be transplanted. In those cases, though, they can take tissue, like bone, and skin, and tendons and things, and still use them in medical scenarios, often also in research scenarios. And so, a lot goes into, if something happens to you, where you end up in that. It's, you make a simple decision, yes or no, do I want to? But, after that comes many and many difficult decisions. And so, I don't have a percentage, no.
Let me, let me ask, I think many of us know that on our driver's license, we can make the decision that we want to be organ donors. And again, as you said, it may or may not be appropriate whether or not we passed, and how long we passed, and what our physical condition is. Is, if we don't have it on our driver's license, can, you know, can our family members make that decision on our behalf?
Yes, so, if you don't make that decision on your own, and you are in a circumstance where you would be an appropriate donor, typically, Donor Alliance, who's the agency, has a registry of everyone who said yes. And that may be a situation where they may approach your family. I don't exactly know how they, my job is just to say yes or no, will I let them, or will I not? But, that may be something that gets approached by the caring physicians, and then Donor Alliance, and And, and ultimately the, the family still has the power to say yes or no. So you may say yes, but your family may say no.
Yep.
That's why it's important for you to have those conversations with
Your family.
Your family before so that they can hopefully honor your wishes. Because at the time, they're, they're worried about other stuff, right? It may not be in an emotional place, but if they remember having that conversation with you, it makes it an easy yes.
And what organs can be transplanted?
Uh, hearts, lungs, kidneys, certainly those are the big ones. But they can use, like I said, bone for grafts. They can use heart valves for, uh, for other children who have congenital abnormalities. They can use skin for burn patients. There's not every organ, but the vast majority of, of organs and tissues have value to living people. Um, and so it can make, and you got to understand that you say, well, I, I'm, I'm going to give my organs and somebody gets your heart and you kind of think, oh, I'm going to give my heart and I'm going to save someone's life. That's wonderful. That's true. But you may have dozens of people who are positively impacted, burn patients and little kids and house fires and scientific research that may benefit tens of thousands of people down the line. Um, and so it really is an incredible gift.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you say this is your last slide, doctor?
I think it is.
Okay. So, so I'm, I'm going to talk about that, but I'm also going to talk about a couple of other things, if that's okay. So your point was made, I think, the fact that the 27 who, uh, did provide some of those organs, 70 affected directly 77 people.
Exactly.
And of course, then there's the indirect effect on their family members and everybody else. And many cases, pretty direct.
Yeah.
So, um, I, I think that's illustrative. And, uh, so I'm engaged in a little bit of, uh, advocacy and please, please be an organ donor and have that conversation because the fact that you can affect lives, uh, even after you may pass on is, is pretty huge. And yes, science is great, you know? My wife has a, uh, metal D of some thing, but not everything. We have not managed to recreate everything.
That's exactly right.
Let me, let me comment. This is the third time I've heard the presentation. Councilmember Henjim and I, Purdue with the, the Health Foundation, but I also saw it online for the El Paso County Commission. And, uh, I, I have to say that each time I learn things and, uh, but I, I want to make a point that you'd started by talking about coroners. And I've been in other counties when they're having their elections and, and the coroner candidates talk about how well they will do in notifying the family members and the compassion they will share. And that's kind of what they run on because almost all of them are going to turn to an actual forensic pathologist for all of the main work of the office. And so that's what differentiates them. And we, we have always been blessed since I've been here to have a forensic pathologist as our coroner. Uh, we, we've had a series of them. I think one of the mayor's best speeches he's ever given was the nomination for Dave Bowerman about, uh, the top 10 reasons to vote for him, like, uh, never had a patient complaint and, uh, a series of other things along that line. But, uh, we are fortunate and, and I appreciate it. And it is, there are offices in which you select people mostly for the policies they're going to adopt. And there are offices for which you want someone who's competent. Ideally, you'd have both, but let me just say that the coroner's office is one of those that I care much more about the competence and I, to, to my 91,000 friends who said, I'd rather have a diesel mechanic as coroner, I disagree with you. Uh, and I, I think it is critical we have that forensic pathologist. But Dr. Kelly, you have done way more than, uh, just be the coroner. And so, uh, I know I've said this before, but I mean it. You were stepping in to help, help the Department of Health, played a huge role. And I still believe that of all the briefings I've heard on COVID and related issues, you and your team that you work with, uh, provided by far better briefings than I saw on any of the network TVs and any of the folks in DC. And so we have been very fortunate and blessed to have you as our coroner. So now having said that, now I've got another question. So you said 24% of all people who come into your office, um, had evidence of marijuana usage. What's the percentage of those that died from an accidental drug deaths?
Um, I don't remember if I have that. I have those for motorcycles, I have those for cars. I don't know if I have the presence of marijuana also in the setting. Uh, I have it on a spreadsheet, but I don't know if I know that number off the top of my head. It's going to be way higher than that 24%, right? Cause that, that includes babies, that includes 100 year olds, that's everybody. So it's going to be a higher percentage certainly than, than that, than that, what we saw there.
Okay. If, if it would be possible at some point, if you could just shoot us over with those, all of those other categories.
Yeah. And, and most of them are in the rapport. The challenge, and this gets into the pharmacology of marijuana, which I don't have time for, but, um, there's limits to what I can conclude just because marijuana or metabolites are present. So what we've discovered is that marijuana is held on by fat. And when death occurs, the body begins to break down. And as the body breaks down, it releases those substances back into the bloodstream. And so after death, I draw blood, I test it, I have marijuana parent and the various metabolites. Some of those are pharmacologically active, some of those aren't. And so the ideally what you'd want to do is conclude whether the person was intoxicated at the time. But because we are aware of what we call postmortem release, um, particularly in things like a car crash where tissue is crushed, um, or bodies that are starting to break down through decomposition, that we've done serial collections where you take blood today, you wait 12 hours, you take blood again. And there are differences in the blood levels that go up. Sometimes they go up, sometimes they go down. It's kind of, it's, it's disconcerting in our ability to interpret those. All I can say, when I take the stand and testify is that, that, that I have marijuana metabolites present in blood or body fluids. That mean the person was exposed to marijuana recently. I can't conclude that they were necessarily intoxicated at the time of their death because of the various things that I just talked about. So, you know, there's data and then there's knowing what the data means. And we're in an area with marijuana where it's just, as we all know, it's just difficult. There's, there's more questions than there are answers. But hopefully it'll evolve and we'll, we'll learn more.
Yeah.
I can get to that. Yeah. Thank you for your kind words.
So go see your doctor and take care of yourself.
I knew I shouldn't have said that. So dishonest, being like, you know, you need to take better care of yourself and.
I hear you. We, we appreciate your forthright.
Yes. I'll, I'll lead through humility and, and recognizing my own failures.
Okay. Yolanda?
So, Dr. Kelly, I have the, the same sentiments about you as Wayne expressed. And, uh, maybe this will be reported on or presented by one of the other speakers, but like the LGBTQ community and suicide, our death by suicide. You, you began the presentation with that in a hundred years, our lifespan has doubled. And, and why is that important? And so here in Colorado Springs, I, people wanted to debate the number, whether 17, 16, 15, that our lifespan in southeast Colorado Springs is that much less. It's double digits, however, and very disturbing. And so I'm wondering if someone is going to speak to that because it's crucial and how the, uh, the, the zip codes, 80916 and 80910 have been very impacted. They were impacted before and now with COVID. So is anybody going to speak to that?
Uh, I have spoken to that on other occasions. I gave a whole speech to it last year. I don't have that data. Once we get to rates and those kinds of things, I usually leave it to my public health colleagues. And I don't remember, you guys don't have that. We're going to focus on, I think, child fatality review and that kind of thing. But, but maybe I'll, I'll take that back to Susan and maybe we can bring that presentation another time because you're absolutely right. The, and we see that across the country, the zip code that you were born and lived in can alter your life expectancy upwards of 30 years from some parts of New York to other neighborhoods in New York. Um, and that's also true of El Paso County, um, that depending on the neighborhood you were born in, your life expectancy can change dramatically. And as you said, 15 to 20 years in some cases. And so I, I don't know that we're presenting that today, but it certainly could be in the future.
Okay. I, I just think it's key when we're talking about lifespans and, and, and your work and the, in determining what it is that takes people's lives, that it's so crucial.
Yep. You're absolutely right.
But thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of, uh, Dr. Kelly? Seeing anybody online? Okay. What's next?
So we've got our, my colleagues.